Frozen Lake, the darkest evening of the year. He gives his harness bells a shake to ask if there is some mistake. The only other sounds is the sweep of easy wind and downy lake. Woods are lovely, dark and deep. But I have promises to keep. And miles to go before I sleep. And miles to go before I sleep. Sleep, sleep, sleep before I sleep. Sleep, sleep. And miles to go before I sleep. Before I sleep.
So West Amwell course usually has about 25 students involved. So this is a much smaller number than what we had for four or five. Just different things keeping it away now from the holidays and all that. But super exciting opportunity for these students up here to perform in a small ensemble situation. So might be a little nervous for some of us, but I think we're doing an awesome job. So good for you guys. Our last piece that we're going to perform for you is called No School Tomorrow If It Snows. This happens to be one of their favorites. I wonder why. Everyone loves a snow day, as one of our students said at our concert a couple of weeks ago. So thank you again for having us perform tonight. It's been a pleasure and I hope you enjoy our last session.
The weatherman is saying that snow is on the way. The sun is disappearing, the sky is turning gray. I went into the forecast, I hope it isn't wrong. And that is why I sing this, that is why I sing this song. There'll be no tomorrow, no tomorrow, no school if it snows. There'll be no tomorrow, no tomorrow, no school if it snows. I'm wishing and I'm hoping that snow won't fall tonight. I'm rustling all my fingers so very, very tight. I thought I should get a blizzard, it's not only fun. And that is why I sing this, that is why I sing this song. There'll be no tomorrow, no tomorrow, no school if it snows. There'll be no tomorrow, no tomorrow, no school if it snows. And now it's dawn and springing, I jump up from my bed. And yes, I do remember what the weatherman had said. I run straight to the window to see if he is right. Everything snowy white. There is no tomorrow, no tomorrow. No school if it snows. There'll be no tomorrow, no tomorrow, no school if it snows.
Turn around.
No school if it snows. There'll be no tomorrow, no tomorrow, no school if it snows.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. What did you guys say?
Thank you.
Maybe the kids are right. The kids have spoken.
As a follow up to that, I do want to mention, if you had an opportunity last week to come to our concerts, our middle school concerts that were going Tuesday night and our lighting concerts on Thursday night. They were absolutely amazing. Two of the best concerts I've ever seen. So a huge credit, I know Mr. Crimmins in the audience. Stevens not here tonight, but I just wanted to give a shout out because they were amazing concerts. And a shout out to the board because I think it was mentioned, we have done a lot of upgrades in that facility. We did audio and lighting and all kinds of neat things. And I think you saw that last week in the show. And that was because of the board's support and dedicating no funds to that space. So again, congratulations, it was awesome. Unfortunately, we do not have our student representative meeting. We left school under the weather earlier today. We'll see him next month. Okay, we're going to move on to our updates now. We'll start with the PTO, anybody with a PTO.
During the holidays, we have a holiday shop. Students were given the opportunity to shop with their families, friends, and relatives. With fundraisers, the major PTO has earned almost $1,700. And then all the kids can bring their experience for them. They have plans, budget breaks, and they're fine to work over time to shop with them. We had our fifth night out, but at the beginning of the month, we've been trying to help fund the cultural community. This month, we had a holiday PJ party.
Oh, where was I? This month, we did a holiday PJ party with hot cocoa, games, and crafts. We keep the kids from 6:30 to 9:00 and we entertain them while the parents have a fun night out. These events are easy and with very little overhead for us. To date this year, we've earned around $2,500 for the PTO with these events, which is pretty amazing considering how little we have to do for them. Look out for a date towards the end of January for the next one. This event is, like I said, a great, easy money earner for the PTO. And it's not possible without the people who run it. I reached out recently to the senior advisor for senior volunteers. I reached out pretty late, so I wasn't able to get any senior volunteers. But we had such great success with trunk or treat. I'd really like some senior involvement or any kids that need volunteer hours. So if any of you guys could help out with that or anyone at the high school, that would be really amazing. We are still running our box tops contest. The winning grade will receive a prize at the end of the year. We are currently running a side contest for the grade that had the least amount of box tops. They were given a challenge of running, sorry, reaching 175 box tops. And if they reach that goal, the PTO will buy them pretzels. Kindergarten is still in the lead with 923 box tops. This is a great way to earn money for our school. You just download the app, add your school's info, and start scanning. Our goal is $1,000 and we currently have 330. If you have grandparents, aunts and uncles, or other family members that shop a lot, grab their receipts or have them start scanning and download the app. On Thursday, the PTO will be buying our staff lunch from Chive. A menu on a Google Doc will go out to staff tomorrow with lunch and drinks. And they can choose and it will be delivered to the school on Thursday at their lunchtime. This is just our way of saying thank you for them being rock stars and amazing to our kids every day. It was pointed out at the last meeting that the West Amwell School will be celebrating their 70th year. We quickly reached out to the T-shirt supplier that we use and we were able to come up with a design. Commemorative T-shirts are on sale on MTK until January 1st, when the order will be placed with delivery at the end of January. Depending on sales, we'll open the sale up to accommodate other orders. We hosted a parents' paint night at Paint Party Farm last week. It was super relaxing and just what we needed to chill out before the holidays. We hope to do another event in late spring when Brian returns from Florida. Our sixth graders are still killing it with fundraising. They have little over $7,500. They are just finishing up their luminary fundraiser, which will add about $1,000 in addition to that. So a big thank you to our sixth grade parents for doing such an amazing job with fundraising. I also wanted to take a minute to thank all of our committee chairs, fellow PTO board members, and our parent volunteers. Our organization wouldn't be successful without their dedication to our school and our kids. The PTO will be hosting a meeting on Wednesday, January 11th, at WAS to discuss the future of the parent organizations in the district. We think it's important for us all to work together and meet all of the needs that the three new buildings will have. I think it's important for the middle school, high school to have a parent organization. And we would love to brainstorm what that might look like. Our next meeting, PTO meeting, will be Monday, January 9th at 7:30 PM at the West Amwell.
Thank you.
Thank you. PTA?
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Valmer, LPS PTA. Just a couple of things for us. I just wanted to do a big thanks to everyone who's already contributed to our Tory Drive. Tomorrow's the last day, but I can tell you that the boxes at LPS and Livin' Charlie's and Chive have been filled up and perhaps emptied and filled up again, I'm not even sure. But I know that our student council is going to be helping some parents take everything over to Fisherman's Mark tomorrow or Wednesday. So thanks to everyone who donated. And I think we're going to be making a lot of students and local children really happy with some of the gifts that came through with that. And Fisherman's Mark has also said, you know, is happy to have another chance to collaborate with the school district in that way. Our gift, we're trying a new thing this year. So Gift Crowd is open for parents who want to make a donation to teacher gifts for the holidays. If you haven't seen emails about that, please send an email to lpsptatwo@gmail.com, our regular email address to inquire. But just wanted to mention that because it's something new and we'll see how it goes. That ends on the 21st, so the clock is ticking. And for our sixth grade report, we had an iPhone 14 raffle that wrapped up at our holiday concert, which was great. They earned about $3,700 through the raffle. And the Christmas tree pickup is starting again. So those of you who know this tradition, it's a tried and true fundraiser for the sixth grade. It brings in usually quite a good sum. Just keep an eye out for information. I think it's going to be a fairly short window for pickup this year, ending probably the end of the first week in January. So if you are interested in taking advantage of this fundraiser, which means that you just put your tree out and make a donation and someone takes your tree away, just keep an eye out for information about that. It's a very easy way to get your tree gone, to give a little money to the sixth grade, and to contribute to the mulch in Lambertville. Thank you very much. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. LAEF? Way from LAEF. See you back there.
All the way in the back. My name is Lauren Romberger and I'm part of the LAEF board. And I'll be sharing some information with you this month. So we had a grant update. We recently approved the Cultivative Kindness Grant for LPS, which is on your agenda to approve tonight. This will be a two-program initiative brought forth by the LPS Parent School Climate Team and the Guidance Counselors Marissa Cortina. The message is that kindness is like a seed that we each need to cultivate. Pre-K to second grade utilizes stories from two children's books. The drive message home through reading interaction from students and animated short during a 35-minute assembly. Grade three through five program utilizes Richard E. Spout Jr.'s science background and utilizes demonstrations illustrate the effects of bullying. Students are challenged to recognize the power of even a single act of kindness to prove to them that one act of kindness can change the world. This assembly lasts about 50 minutes. Golf Day and our annual campaign this fall were both a huge success. And we want to thank the community for their generous support. Our next fundraiser will be our annual auction and benefit on Saturday, March 25th, at the new location, the Union Fire Company in Titusville, New Jersey, right on Route 29. Our auction committee is composed of many volunteers that do not have to be an LAEF board member. We invite all interested parents and community members to be a part of the planning committee. The first committee meeting will be Thursday, January 5th at 8 o'clock at the Lambertville Station. All are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence to be read? No correspondence to be read? Need a motion to approve of the minutes?
Second.
That was a... All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Do you know superintendent update?
Yeah. Before I get started, I just wanted to do a quick acknowledgement. And that was for Sean Els, because tonight is your last board meeting. So I really, on behalf of the board in the district, wanted to thank you. Sean came on in January, was with us for a year. You know, folks in the audience, obviously you see our board members, you know, one time a month at this meeting, but there is a lot of behind the scenes with committee meetings and all kinds of different things that happen. So it is a huge time commitment. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for that time commitment and wish you well.
Thank you so much, Tony. Thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure to work with everyone.
All right, a few things that I want to update. First, important announcement, as you know, and I thank the community and our staff and even hopefully some of our students. Over the last about two months, we've been taking nominations for our Governor's Educator of the Year award winners. And within the last week or so, we just made our announcements. So I'll share what those names are and then we will bring those folks formally to a board meeting in March to recognize them. But obviously, you know, a very strong group of folks. So first from LPS, we have Carol Sashman, who's one of our paraprofessionals. And then we have Brett Leely, who is a special education teacher and works with our self-contained autism program. At West Amwell, we have Janet Wegeren, who's a paraprofessional. And then Oregon's Kazari.
Yes, hi.
And the audience, who's one of our classroom teachers. And then Middlewood High School, we have Dawn Stevens, who is our art teacher. So one of our art teachers. So again, awesome job. Congratulations. Our folks, as I've said before, will be on tour for the remainder of the year. They'll come out and, you know, be recognized at our March board meeting later in the year in May. They'll go and be recognized with all of our county teachers of the year at a luncheon. So I'll be sharing all those details as you attend many events to be honored for your incredible accomplishment. So once again, congratulations. And then last week, we had another special event. So last Tuesday, we had our advanced graduation for our therapy dog program. So you've heard me talk about this before. We started our therapy dog program back in July. And our folks have been meeting every Tuesday since July 19th from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. So that's a huge time commitment. And last Tuesday, on the 13th, we received our advanced graduation certificates along with all of our dogs, which is a huge accomplishment, right, of all the different training we've done. And here's the really cool thing. So Attitudes in Reverse, which is the organization that we're working with, is working with a bunch of school districts in the state of New Jersey this year. They announced last week at our training that we are the only district where all nine individuals who participated stayed and did not drop out of the program. Every other district they've worked with, because of how much time it is, with the training outside of the training, the normal, you know, sessions that we have and things we have to do on our own, we were the only district where everyone committed. So we are, one of our honorees is missing from our picture. That is Mr. Peterson Day and his dog Gary. I love that name. Gary was absent for our final graduation, but he did receive his certificate. So this is pretty cool. Again, next steps, we're all very nervous. We have testing. So January 3rd through the 17th. So for three straight weeks, we all have to sign up for a half-hour time slot, where we come in and we go through a pretty extensive examination. And we're not allowed to use any treats, no food. So we've been working towards that, where we've been weaning our dogs off of that. And then hopefully with that, we'll continue on for the remainder of the year. But you'll probably start seeing our dogs in the school setting more than you had so far. So again, huge accomplishment. This is going to be great. Remember, as I had said during the summer when we kicked this off, the goal will be to have a dog in every building every day, which I think is amazing for a variety of different things. And, you know, kudos to our staff for, this is all their own personal time to be able to do this. So, you know, again, it's pretty special. So hopefully we'll all pass our tests and we're going to be studying hard over winter break. So pretty cool. All right, so a couple of things on our school construction project update. So just something I wanted to mention, if you recall from our August board meeting, the board approved actually that night for us to use New Jersey Asset and Rebate Program. Basically, the purpose of that was to invest our referendum funds over the next 18 months. Because obviously, we're not using all the funds at one time, right, as our projects roll out. So this is a group that deals specifically with school districts and municipalities. And they invest the money for us, so hopefully we can make some money on the interest. So I'm happy to report that our original investment value when we started this back in September was $31,412. You can see as of today, we're up to $31,490. And we've made about $78,000 in interest for our referendum fund. So that's awesome. We expect over the next, you know, 14 months that that will continue to grow. So I just kind of wanted to be, you know, fully transparent and share where things stand as far as how that investment's going. And then just a couple other updates. This is great. So we have 100 responses for the naming of the pre-K 4 and 5/8 buildings. So just a reminder that the deadline is this Friday. I'll probably send out one more email and text message by the end of the week. But this has been an incredible response. I think we did a good job of getting it in multiple outlets to get as much community, you know, input as possible. So just as a reminder, once we come back from break, we'll be taking that information and based on our criteria, really narrowing it down to hopefully a top five choices for each one of the schools. And then the next phase is to have our students vote to kind of see where that lands. So and then eventually, you know, two of the top names for each will come to the board. And the hope would be by the end of February at our board meeting that we can make an announcement as far as where our names will be and then move forward with that process. So as far as our projects, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we're still waiting on our final DCA approval before we go out to bid. So we're probably about 85% there. We're just waiting on one or two more items. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed each and every day I check with our architect to see where things stand. But I did want to mention a few things. So we started about a month ago a furniture design committee for our pre-K 4 and our 5/8 building. And it's actually being facilitated by Mr. Miller, who was here, you know, not too long ago, our principal at West Amwell. So I just wanted to share a couple of things from that committee. As far as, we're working with a vendor called Worko. And specifically, we're looking at, so, you know, we've looked at different samples when it comes to chairs, teacher desks, and student desks. And you can see based on what you see on the screen here that they're not things that you would traditionally see probably in classrooms now. They're much more, you know, focused on flexibility, easy to configure. You know, we're getting away from the big lords' teacher desk and making it much more mobile and can be moved around the room depending upon what activities. And then when you take a look at our classroom setups, this is really what we're looking at. So going back to our district goals, and when I talk about blended and personalized learning and student collaboration as we design our classrooms, right, and we take a look at what that furniture's going to look like, this is really what we're focusing on. The type of furniture that we can easily configure. You'll see here, you know, now there's desks that actually have whiteboard porcelain tops that you can use as a marker board. So when you're doing things like math or things along those lines, you know, instead of students having a portable where they have to hold up, they can write right on their desk. And there's a 50-year warranty on these types of products. So these are things that we've been interested in to take a look at as far as our design. And then something else that we're looking at specifically, it's this right here for our pre-K 4. So this is an interactive panel, right? So rather than your standard projector for pre-K 4, we're really looking at something that's more interactive. Right now, actually, we have one of these on-site that we're piloting at the LPS school. And then eventually, we're going to be piloting with West Amwell. It's called a clever touch and it's 75 inches. And it really is like a flat panel TV, a flat-screen TV. But obviously, it's totally interactive, where you could have up to 20 students if you needed to at one time. So we've been playing around with that and we've been trained on it. And we're looking at that as well to perhaps utilize for our pre-K 4, so from a technology side. So again, just a couple more pictures so you can kind of see what things look like in our configurations.
Sort of the interactive, like the iPad.
Correct. And actually, my presentation that I'll send out... And actually, my presentation that I'll send out, there's a link here so you can click on it for the clever touch and see exactly what we're talking about. This is, that's really what it is, and you can access your Google Drive and all kinds of different, there's an app store, all kinds of neat stuff. So I think so far, it's been pretty positive with the pilot. We'll see how things play out. But again, we're really excited as we make these decisions, and again, looking for our staff to provide a lot of input. We're working with some of the furniture vendors to actually give us free samples of furniture, so we can actually try it out rather than just see it and bring it on-site and utilize it, see what we like and don't like. And then eventually, we still have time later in the spring, you know, we'll make a decision as far as which way we're going to go. So as we work through the school construction projects, I wanted to kind of educate folks as we work through the process. And each month, we'll probably have a different piece of the process depending upon where we are, could be with funding or whatever it may be. But this month, I thought it was pretty important, as we get ready to go out to bid for these projects, you know, the question oftentimes comes up, well, how does a contractor actually even bid on a project like this? And who can bid? Can anyone who has a construction company bid on a school project? So I wanted to walk you through what the law is and what guidelines we have to follow as far as the bid process, because there is a pre-qualification process that a contractor needs to do in order to even bid on a school or a municipal project. So just a couple of things. First of all, contractors who want to bid on projects for a school, they have to be classified by the New Jersey Treasury Department, Division of Property Management and Construction. Oftentimes, you'll see them referred to DPMC. And what that process does is DPMC has the task really taking a look at a contractor as to the type and the amount of work that they may provide. So can they provide all scope of work, or there are specifics based on the skillset of the contractor, whether it's plumbing or electrical or whatever it may be. The contractor wishing to be classified by DPMC must submit a request for classification, which fully describes their financial ability, responsibility, plant and equipment, organization, ownership, relations, and prior experience. So they got to have to build a portfolio, right? They have to go Department of Treasury and say, look, this is how much money we have, this is all the projects we've done in the past, this is all the, you know, our staffing, how many employees we have, the type of equipment we have. All that information has to be submitted before they're given a classification. Then the DPMC is going to evaluate this prior to assigning a classification, and they're going to really look at specific construction categories, and they're going to see, like, based on that, what would the contractor be eligible to bid on? So depending upon the level of contractor, they may not be able to bid on certain jobs depending upon how big they are and how much money they are. And that's really where the classification comes into play. So they could get what's called a general construction classification, which means basically they can bid on an entire job, or depending upon how things play out, they may only be able to bid on the electrical components of it or the plumbing components of it, because they're not big enough or they don't have the skillset in order to bid on the entire job. So if they're deemed to be financially strong and experienced, in other words, they've done jobs in the state of New Jersey, they've done jobs successfully in the state of New Jersey, they could receive an unlimited rating, which basically means they could bid on any project regardless of how much uncompleted work they have. So, you know, they're really looking to say, see with this classification system, all right, this is the number of employees, and you already have two other jobs going, but yet you want to bid on this. You really don't have the amount of employees to be able to do three jobs simultaneously. So that classification is not going to work for you. Or you are really big and you are really skilled and you've proven yourself in the past, and you can bid on this job, because even though you have one or two other jobs, you have plenty of employees. So that's everything that goes into that process. You know, a contractor who has a small aggregate rating, they may not be able to bid for a big project like our 5-8 middle school, right? Because they just don't have, you know, the amount that they need, and they have too much uncompleted work that's still out there that has not been completed. So obviously, if that was the case, and they bid on the job and they got it, and they're stretched thin, that's only going to lead to problems. So that is something we're trying to avoid. Contractors required to certify in their bid. So when we have our bid opening, right, they are going to give Mr. Harris an envelope with all of their bid documents, and Mr. Harris will be here along with our architect. And within that, they have to certify in those documents that they're not going to exceed their rating, all right, based on if they were given this job. And that's really to prevent us from getting a contractor that obviously is not capable of getting a big job but wants to try to make money, but they don't have the number of employees and it's not going to be good. We want to weed them out. Maybe they would be better off bidding on the pre-K 4, because it's not going to be as big a job as building a brand-new building. And that's how the process works. So really, at the end of the day, our district architect determines in our bid documents, what classification are we going to ask for? And what I will tell you is for both projects, we will be asking for a general construction classification. And the code for that for a new building is C008, and then for a pre-K 4 building, which is considered basically alterations, meaning renovation, and then there'll be a small addition in the front, they'll need a C009. So when they provide the bid documents and submit all the information, if they don't have documents stating that they fall into these categories, they're automatically disqualified, even if they come in as the lowest bid, right? That's a really important process. As we go through it, we're looking for the lowest bid, which we're required to take, but we're also looking to see whether or not they have all the proper criteria. And I've been in meetings before where a contractor was basically disqualified on site, because they either didn't submit the proper paperwork or they didn't fill out something correctly, therefore leading to a disqualification. So the contractor selected will be determined to be the lowest responsible bidder. So we're required to go with the lowest bid based on how we advertise both projects, and then the lowest numerical bid that substantially complies with all the requirements will be considered our bidder and will be awarded the contracts, and then we'll be eventually coming to the Board of Education for approval. It's important to note that the district does not have any control over subcontractors. So if I'm someone who has a general construction classification, I bid on the job, which means that I'm going to either be handling in-house all the stubs, I have my own plumber, my own electrician, my own HVAC, whatever that may be, or I'll be subbing that out. We don't really have control over that. However, the general contractor is coming into this saying, I am capable of doing this, and I have all the necessary classification from the Department of Treasury that says I've been able to do it in the past and will be able to do it in the future. So that's how that process works. So I just wanted to kind of share in full transparency, as we get ready to go out to bid, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, what it takes for someone to actually bid on our jobs. I've said this before, I'll say it again, I don't think we will have the same contractor for both jobs. I do think we will have a different contractor, which is probably a good thing for the pre-K 4 versus the 5-8, you know, as far as how that bid process goes. So more information to share, as soon as we get approval, obviously I'll be letting the community know that we'll be going out to bid. We'll be putting out all the bid specs for about three to four weeks, and then we will have a bid opening probably in this room, hopefully, you know, sometime in January.
Any questions from the board on anything with, that I presented in my opening?
I have a question about this, the contractor, you know, to prove that the contractor is not overextending themselves, they have to certify that they don't go over that, you know, certain amount and don't have too many projects out. How does, how does that get certified? Like, how do they?
Department of Treasury will certify that. And then when they provide, they will provide documents to us saying they have that certification.
Okay.
And that's usually when a contractor gets himself in trouble. They'll try to bid on the project not having that, and that's what we disqualify them on sight of the bid opening.
That sounds like there's a complex vetting process that they have to go through before they get to us.
That is correct.
And then we get those that are only qualified to take our project, and it's a closed bid where we don't see it, and it's just the lowest number is who gets it.
Right. And it's really, they have to do their due diligence. It's not like we can get to the bid opening and say, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot that form. Let me run home and get it. It's an all or none. If you don't have it all together, you're disqualified, and we move on to the next bidder.
And they're, they're held to that number? They're not, there's not like, oh, we, something happened and we have to add on to that? Okay.
Yep. And we actually, as part of, part of the bid opening, Andrew and our architect open up each bid and read the contractor's name and read the bid out loud, and then we record it after we go. Hopefully, we have a bunch of bids. That's a good thing. We have a bunch of folks that are bidding, and then eventually we will word the lowest bid and make that a nail. And at that point, other contractors in the room have a right to review any bid documents, just to make sure that everything is, you know, the way it should be if they request.
Tony, do you have a mechanism to prefer someone applying for both bids? Do you not want the same contractor on those jobs?
Depends on who it was. I mean, honestly, if we got, and we kind of know the names out there that are really good contractors, they really are two different tiered jobs. So the pre-K 4 is kind of one-level contractor that would typically bid on that, and the 5-8 is a higher level typically built. So that's why I'm assuming we're probably going to get two, more than likely.
So if, reasonably speaking, someone with a general instruction rating isn't going to go after the refurbishment?
They could, but they just might be a smaller company compared to a bigger, you know.
We go on the public comment. We have comment on any items on the agenda. We have procedures and requirements that include standard of conduct and need to be followed by members of the public during public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period of public comment, the member of the board charged with running the public meeting shall warn a disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior, such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption, use of gravity, or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Members of the public are invited to address the board in any manner for a maximum three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to say your name and municipality. Public comment is now open. Anybody like to say anything? Please come on up to the podium. Everybody? Not even Merry Christmas?
We don't have anyone.
We do not have anyone from home. We will have a second public comment in case you do hear anything on the agenda that you want to comment on. So unless anybody raises their hand, I will close it. Can you come up and just state your name and your municipality, please? Thank you.
My name is Cassidy Moreno, from Lambertville. I had a question about the furniture, specifically for the pre-K and stuff. You said that there was like, for 4 through pre-K, there were like a lot of plans and like that, seeing those designs, is that included in the middle school plans and the high school? Will there be changes in the architectural interior of the buildings as well?
Absolutely. The goal is really to have flexible furniture, like you saw in the pictures throughout the entire district.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. All right, no one else? All right, we will close that. We will have another one at the end of the meeting. All right, let's move it on to Building, Ground, and Transportation Finance and see. Diana?
So we met on Thursday, the 15th. We talked about school construction updates that Tony just shared, as well as the middle school, high school lighting project that we talked about. We're looking to get that started in the spring, hopefully tied up by the end of the year. Also talked about the Stockton School. We are nearing the end of that road where we can finally turn that over to the borough, which will be wonderful. Talked about preschool expansion. We're still looking for potential spaces for a fourth pre-K classroom, because that program is growing. Other highlights, we are accepting the LAEF grant for the LPS Hopeful Big Kindness Program that Lauren just opened out, as well as submitting an application for local recreation improvement grant, and that's for a fitness course and some playground equipment at the new 5-8 building. Those are the highlights that I have. So with that, I'd like to move items A through M.
Second. Any discussion on items A to M? Questions? Andrew Ropel? Speaking with Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Chris Petrucci?
Yeah.
Dana Frisell?
Yes.
Ryan Todd Moreno?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalowski?
Yes.
All right, moving on to personnel. I can tell you.
I can, yeah, I can do that. So two really topics, main topics. We talked about personnel, one with our Governor's Educator of the Year awards, how, you know, obviously we'll be honoring those folks. And the second is that I met recently with all of our staff, each of our faculty meetings over the last couple of weeks, really just to share as we talk about district reconfiguration, specifically about staffing decisions. And the fact that as we get to later in the school year in February, I'll be surveying staff to kind of get an idea and some feedback and input from them as to where they see themselves, you know, in September of '24, you know, the pre-K 4, the 5-8, or the 9-12. And then our goal is to hopefully work on that, and then this time, probably next year, right when we get back from winter break, be able to share with staff, you know, who's going where to each building and start planning for that process over the last four or five months of the school year. So those were our two main topics.
Okay, need a motion? Items A and B?
So will.
Any discussion on items A and B?
I think Mrs. Stevens has been here for 30 years or more.
Yes.
She's been here for a very long time.
And is our educator of the year.
And is our educator of the year. It was a long time, but sorry to see her go a lot of the time.
She's my art teacher.
She was.
And we will, just a reminder, later in the year, usually in April or May, we will be honoring our retirees. So we will definitely have Mrs. Stevens here at our meeting.
Andrew Ropel? Ryan Higgin Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Dana Frisell?
Yes.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Ryan Todd Moreno?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalowski?
Yes.
Josh Harris? Personnel and Technology, Jim?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kowalowski. The committee met on December the 8th here at the library. Among the things that we discussed, one of our guidance counselors, Carly Isabella Murin, gave a presentation about some programs that we're going to be running at the high school next year. One is the Partnership for Change, in which we'll be talking to students about, we won't, but counselors who know what they're doing will talk with students about teen dating and healthy relationships. We did discuss the fact that they separate the boys and girls for certain parts of this program, and what they have found is that this provides a safer space, because sometimes there are conversations that become awkward, and it is easier, provides an opportunity for people to ask questions. Another program we're going to be providing is called Ryan's Story. It is about bullying, and I believe that a boy who was bullied and committed suicide. So it is very sensitive material, but also topical. That program is scheduled for January the 20th, and it's going to run during our house period, which is, as you know, we do a couple of classes. We do a sort of a period in the middle and then, and then back to class. This is not taken away from academic time. Parents are going to be notified about this with a letter, if that letter hasn't been sent already. And those who don't want children to participate will have the opportunity to opt out. There was a third program we discussed called Current Trends in Substance Abuse, which is by the Hundred and Partnership for Change, and that was already done in December, but I believe they will be doing another program with that in the spring.
Just going to correct, that's Prevention Resources.
Oh, Partnership for Change, yeah, I wrote it wrong, sorry. Prevention Resources, okay. Thank you. We are, we did discuss a new STEM-related opportunity for our students called Data Jam. This is a competition that we'd be doing in partnership with a coalition of Pittsburgh area companies and universities called the Pittsburgh Data Works. And it is all about investigating data and how data is used in everyday life. Students that are interested in this would meet on a weekly basis, brainstorm and work through problems, and there is a competition scheduled in April. We may be looking to the LAEF to fund this as a pilot for the first year, so there may be a grant request coming for that. But it is, it was brought to us by Beth Bauer, who was a, children attended this school, child attended this school, and has always been involved in STEM and robotics programs. So I think this is an exciting opportunity. The committee discussed possibly adding a few new courses in the band and music. One would be an honors-level band or chorus. Uh, one would be an honors level band or chorus, course. The other would be a music technology and composition course, which would be an elective. And so we will be recommending for approval, uh, some time to write those curriculums, but that is not on tonight's agenda. Uh, letters have been sent home about the afternoon tutorial program, which is going to start in January, and that's going to run until spring break. And as we discussed, we have some, we have Brown to make up, right, in our, in our scores and our grades, uh, so, uh, this will be open to anybody that's interested, but our teachers are also going to be reaching out to specific students if they feel that there is a need or that they would particularly benefit from the help. Um, we have just approved, uh, a number of instructors who are going to be participating for that. And again, uh, this is for students in kindergarten through grade twelve. Um, we did, uh, discuss data from our, the Start Strong Standardized Assessment, which is a test that students took earlier this year. Uh, at the time that we met, we had not received all of the information from the state, so we did not talk in depth about that. Um, there will be a report to the board at some future meeting, probably in January. Um, and in the meantime, uh, individual student scores are going to be sent home probably later this week. Uh, let's see, one final thing, the committee discussed, uh, the work of our instructional coaches, um, who are working with our teachers on our blended and personalized learning strategies, which is the approach that we have been taking to instruction. Um, our administrators both said that, uh, a lot of teachers are buying into these strategies, and they feel very good about the way this is headed. Um, the instructional coaches, that, those are, uh, positions that we just created for this year, so this is their first year in the district. Um, we did discuss as a committee, how do we quantify the progress? We want to, we want to be able to, it is something that is, that is hard to quantify, right? How do you quantify progress toward a goal like that? So we did talk about, you know, how we can make sure that we are staying on track and that we're actually, you know, moving forward and seeing the results that we want to see, you know, before we get, before we get to the time of standardized tests. Um, we did just approve earlier this evening, uh, some summer hours for those instructional coaches, which will give them an opportunity to basically, you know, go back over the, the year that they've had and refine things for next school year. Uh, and finally, uh, the technology department continues working with the architect, uh, planning for the AV technology. As Mr. Suso mentioned, uh, the panel, um, the, we are piloting a couple of those, uh, instructional panels. They've looked at one, and now they're going to be looking at another one shortly. Um, so kind of exciting stuff, trying to make sure that everything works well and easily. Uh, and with that, I'll close my report. I have nothing to move this evening.
Moving on to policy, Tracy?
So, um, for first reading, we have, uh, we discussed it last meeting, we did not meet today, um, but we are looking forward, for a first read, the executive session, um, applying, um, to the bylaw, not a policy, but, um, it's applicable. Uh, and just as a reminder, first read means in thirty days, the last meeting, in which we will prove it, and it becomes the bylaw. Um, like, some of the key, key changes in the executive session is around allow for telephonic and virtual participation. Um, I mean, during COVID, we allowed it, but there was something actually changed in the, in the bylaw, so, um, and it just talks a little bit about the nature of confidentiality of that session as well. Um, so that is for first read. For second read and for approval this evening, um, we have our policy forty-three hundred, which is around the non-representative, um, employees. Um, there wasn't a lot, I didn't get a lot of feedback on this one, but it was really just something in writing to support this particular, um, area of the staff. And then we have the public participation in board meetings, which is one sixty-seven that is also being brought forward for approval tonight. Um, the big change in that one is just a reminder is around, um, the rules of participating in working. Some of us, um, some of those, uh, who may be interested in speaking or participating, um, the information about things, so it's, it's, um, so I would like to move letters A and B.
Second. Open for discussion? Any discussion on A and B? Tracy, I have a question for you. The bylaw for the, for the executive session, that is mandatory, that we have to let telephonic present something?
Mandatory that we have to allow it?
Yes.
It is allowed in the bylaw, so we are allowed. Right now, the policy, the way it's written, is that we are allowing it.
We are allowed, but it's not a state rule, you're saying?
No, 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 this is our, yeah, this is ours district policy. Um, but certainly, if, if you look at the language and there's something amiss, now is the chance to make the change.
No, I agree with it. I mean, the recommendation of the policy is that we meet, you know, in person, but obviously, if there's unforeseen circumstances, then.
Yeah, you can't guarantee anything. I don't, that's something that we should not, it's too, there's too many important things to discuss where somebody's on the phone or over Zoom, that's, that's just absurdity to let that happen. That's just something.
Tracy, no, I know, it's just something that like, it, it, those types of sessions need to be confidential, and you can't guarantee it in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I mean, and that's the, that's the, that's the thing that we as board members are doing, is trust, right? Where it's, it's stated in the, in the policy that you are required to take all necessary measures to make sure that that conversation is.
But we can easily eliminate any of that by not allowing it to happen, because then there's still, you can say trust factor all you want, but it's still, there's still, you know, it's still chances. And you're doing something online, somebody could get the address, there could be all kinds of things that can happen with that phone and everything. So just, just my opinion that it's the only way to eliminate anything getting out of executive session is not to have telephonic or Zoom allowed. So that's the only way to guarantee it. Other than, you know, then you know that if it was talked about, it's coming from a board member, not somebody overhearing it or somehow getting a link or something like that.
Yeah.
Just my thoughts. I think the good news is that it's an issue that rarely ever comes up. I mean, it, you know, typically, people are here at meetings, and they are there, or they are here to participate in those things.
Yeah, but it's just typical.
I know, I'm just saying, it's.
Doesn't mean it's not going to happen, it's already happened a few times already in the past six months. So it is, it is more typical than you think.
I, that it, yes, well, I'm just saying, in general, I don't think that it happens very often. Um, but, uh, I do think that having the opportunity for a board member who's traveling, a board member who is, you know, unable to come, I, I do, you ultimately do have to trust the other people that you're working with, right? That they're going to, that they're going to have the same level of commitment that you do to keep things confidential, all right? So, um, you know, I don't, I don't have an issue. And we zoom out with, you know, when we have experts sometimes, they're falling in as opposed to, uh, um, coming to these meetings. So, you know, I, I don't, I think that, you know, if it is a problem, if it's being abused, I would be open to revisiting it, but I think that the policy that allows it is a, is a good policy that opens up and allows for greater participation by.
It does not speak to other members of the board, the policy.
Yeah, just a bit speaks to third parties. If we have legal.
Yeah, we do, I mean, and typically the.
And that's usually the same.
The advantage there is it saves the district money, because they don't have to drive all the way down here and sit at the meeting, which they can do as well. So, um, but, uh, like you said, this is a first read, so we have a call, so.
Most of our third-party calls are not dealing with personnel issues or disciplinary issues.
But they're dealing with sensitive legal information.
What's that?
They're usually legal.
Illegal for other things, but not, it's not usually this, we're not talking about student disciplinary or things like that, they're with our council. So we're, we're discussing. There's, there's issues with that.
So my recommendation would be the board that, obviously, I'll put it in my updates, you know, in the next couple of weeks, and if you have an opinion, share it, and we'll bring it back to policy for our next meeting, you will relay it before we vote on.
Starting with Brian Keys?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Uh, Sean Lewis, I'm sorry.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Dana Purcell?
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
I just have a question, is this voting on all three of the policies?
The first one is only a first read?
Right.
That's the one, so.
It's just the first one? Okay, gotcha, yeah, yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, just want to clarify. You're, we're voting on all three policies, but you're voting to authorize the first one for a first reading and the other two for a second reading, which means the second, the, the other two policies will become ineffective.
Correct.
Right.
So I just want, okay, I want to make sure that was.
Yep.
Clear.
So the first policy, we will do a second reading.
Correct, in January.
Correct. So there is time to revise first reading.
Sorry about that, yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Ryan Tomlin?
Yes.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Bush Carries?
What do you mean, Ronnie?
All right, um, in school and community, we met and, um, first discussed the surveys. There's an annual survey that goes out to parents, students, and staff, um, regarding basically the culture of the school and the success of any anti-bullying programming. So, um, this is important time that we gather feedbacks, um, from, from the stakeholders in the district. So we're going to be looking at those surveys in the January meeting, um, to provide feedback and possible additions. We also talked about the strategic planning process. So, um, the district develops a strategic plan every five years, and one will be, a new one will begin next year. Uh, it's an extensive process that we will be, um, working with the New Jersey School Board Association. They will facilitate the meetings. There's an established time, timeline and framework, including committees. So we'll be recruiting, uh, additional, um, volunteers from the community. Really, it's an opportunity for us to build the philosophy that we want, um, for our district for the next five years, especially as we reconfigure the schools. We also talked about, um, press releases and some future pref- press releases, information that we would want highlighted in the community. Um, so we talked about the expanded mental health programming, some of our new partnerships that, with colleges and universities. There's new classes that are offered, um, to, to students currently, um, and so we would like the, the community to understand a little bit more about that because they're pretty cool programs, um, and also to highlight some of the new clubs and activities that are unique to our district. So, and that was it, uh, nothing to me. Any questions?
I'll just add one thing, though. When we did our strategic planning the last time, which was around two thousand and sixteen, you know, we had forty, or we had, I think we had three, a series of three meetings at the end of it that were public meetings, and we probably had maybe forty or fifty people who came to those meetings, see if they were held here at the library, or they, um, you know, the cafeteria. Um, and it would be ideal to get better participation than that, right? Um, you know, we would like to have the more, because, you know, that, that is going to be the blueprint for how, what, you know, basically, the next five or six years of all the things that we're going to be doing. So the more people who are involved, the better. So, you know, just a second, what Ronnie is saying, I would encourage you, put it on the, you know, put it in your, in your, in your calendar somewhere that this is coming. And, you know, if you're a person who's interested in, in education in South Hundred, and this is the time to come and be involved, you know.
And I'll, just to, uh, follow to that, I'll remind parents, but at our February meeting, uh, we will have Gwen Thornton here from New Jersey School Board, and she's going to share an overview of the strategic planning process, exactly what it's going to look like, subcommittees. So if you're at home, or obviously here in person, you'll get an opportunity to see what type of commitment it would be, the timeline for it, and then obviously, our hope is we can get as many folks interested and involved as we possibly can. More to come on that when we return from our break.
Twenty twenty-three meetings are not posted on the website yet.
Are there school board meeting schedules? If there were? All the way to twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, they're not on board, they're on the website. I can give.
As long as they're visible.
Yep, and all the links for YouTube are already built in.
Yep. All right, any motion for items A and B? There's some information.
Second.
Discussion on items A and B?
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Any approval for abstain?
Just move this into our second public comment. Again, you have three minutes. Please state your name and municipality. If anybody would like to say anything, please come on up to the podium. Happy New Year? Sure, come on up. We got one brave soul in there, you know.
I had a, a question from the very first thing that was said, um, and it's, it's kind of a loaded question, but I was going to ask about the, um, teen dating classroom. You said specifically that it was separated into, um, boy students and girl students. Is there going to be a separate one for students that don't fall under those two categories?
I do, oh, I'm sorry, granted.
Students will be able to go wherever, whoever they identify with, so that's how the process.
Is there one separate, though? Because, like you said, it is a very uncomfortable conversation and.
There ha, there hasn't been right now, right now, we were planning on two, but that's something we can talk about.
I would, I would really appreciate it if that was, uh, spoken about, because.
I can talk to the council.
Right, thank you very much.
Well, also, I think, Mr. Hewitt, the, the entire program is not going to be separated, only portions of it, is that right? Or is the entire program separate?
I think the entire program, yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right, anybody else? All right, we're going to close public comment, and we do have a need for a quick executive session tonight. We will, taking no action when we come out, so technically, that will be it, folks. Merry Christmas, happy new year.
Happy holiday.
Everyone a holiday.
Thank you.
Get a motion.
Got a motion to go into executive session, that's, uh, eight oh seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes abstain? Motion carries at eight oh seven. All right. Three minutes, break, no break?
No break.
No break.
No break, we've only been here an hour, because we lose Jim every time.